A town council meeting for October 3, 2023. We are in the Harvey hearing room. The Zoom meeting ID is 836-0558-3544. The passcode is 418913 and the phone number is 646-558-8656. Roll call, please.
Council Honan.
Here.
Council Vesillo.
Here.
Council Munson.
Here.
Council Belcher.
Here.
Council DiMarco.
Here.
Council Flahcutt.
Here.
Council Aiello.
Here.
Vice President Ruggiero. President Luteri.
Yeah.
Please stand for the pledge. Councilor Bellis, please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've had two sets of minutes circulated, July 25 and September 19. Any discussion on those? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Council of Belcher, second by Councilor DiMarco. Any discussion of emissions deletions? Do we want to take these separately? Are there people absent from one of the meetings and not the other?
I don't think so.
Yeah, we could take them separately.
All right, so there's a motion for the July 25 meeting by Councilor Belcher, second by Councilor DiMarco. Any discussion on the July 25 meeting minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Abstentions? That's unanimous. There's also been a motion by Council of Belcher, second by Councilor DiMarco on the September 19 meeting minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Excuse me. On Zoom, it seems that you're muted.
Oh.
In the Harvey room.
Again?
There we go. Are you in? Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
You're welcome.
So the motion is on the September 19 meeting. There's been a motion, there's been a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Abstentions? None.
I will abstain, sorry.
All right, one abstention. General information and recommendations. I had put on the agenda National Grid. We had had on the Revere Street project. We are in the midst of National Grid doing some gas line connections and such. And there's been some confusion with some of the homes. I think people weren't, I think National Grid wasn't expecting to see some of the lines in the houses that were technically now not up to code. So there had to be some changes. So I had had some phone calls, so I reached out. Thanks to DPW director gave me contact. Tammy Saporito from National Grid. Talked to her last Thursday, Friday. And she did send an email, which I will read. Good afternoon, Jim. As requested, please see the update timeline below. This information is from the gas supervisor that is working the project at Revere Street. I believe the gas supervisor is Andrew Joseph, working the project. We have a total of seven services that will require the fitters to transfer. Two of them, two were done last week. As of now, we have five services remaining to relay, which will also require fitting work for the inside portion. We also have five main connections to do as well. With the fitters involved and the five main connections remaining, I can estimate the completion of this project in three to four weeks, which should put us at the end of the month. Once again, that is assuming the customers will allow the fitters to get into the house to do the transfers. I will keep you up to date and email you if there are any delays. So, and we have the DPW director here. And I will ask Steve to just update us on this issue.
Sure. So at this point, the electrical work has been complete. So National Grid gas is on the road. They relayed the main from Upland Road to Trest Avenue. They're in the process, as you just mentioned, of completing their services. All the services need to be completed before they change over to the new main so that nobody loses service. Once those handful of services are completed, they have the five tying connections, which will then energize the new main. They'll be off the road. An ally who is National Grid Electric subcontractor under United Civil will be finishing the streetwork. They'll go back and they'll take care of the panels, which have asphalt now as a result of the gas services. And they'll start reclaiming that roadway and put it in binder for the winter, go back in the spring before the tip project begins and do the final surfacing.
So we're still on track by the end of November to have binder code?
Yeah, off that road by Thanksgiving. That was the, you know, that's the push.
And I think what had happened when the subcontractors went into the homes, they were given some limited options to the homeowners who got very concerned about these potential hazards to their house in terms of the amount of work that they wanted to do. And when National Grid, and I thank Tammy again for getting involved, they came up with different options that were much more feasible to the homeowners. So I thank Tammy and National Grid for doing that. And glad we're back on track there. And thank you, Steve, for all the work you've done on this to keep us up to date. Public hearing, we have none. Public comments? We will open it up. Yes, Mr. Morgan?
Hi, everybody. John Morgan, precinct four. It's October again, and October is White Cane Awareness Month. Friday the 13th this month is White Cane Appreciation Day at the State House in the Hall of Black. So everybody can attend because they give a mean muffin and a hickory orange juice. But the white cane, this is a white cane. It's not a stick. It's called a white cane. Some people may call it a guide cane, depending on what part of the country you're from. Although there was one very interesting second grader that thought it was a metal detector because I spat it. And trying to win an argument with a second grader was not the high point of my day. The white cane gives a person who is blind the independence to travel around in cities and towns where they live. If you go to almost any country in the world, if you see someone with a white cane, that indicates that that person is blind. And again, I had more, but I'm skipping. So I thank you for listening. And I just remember Friday the 13th is not always a bad day for blind.
John, we thank you for bringing this to our attention as you do every year. And we're very grateful for it. And again, just to let everyone know, you always yell to a white cane and guide dog uses at street crossings. It's not only the right thing to do, it's the law. And let's celebrate White Cane Month. And thank you, John, again. Any other public comments tonight at the first round of public comments?
Hi, I'm here with precinct two. I had a few notes that I wanted to just address. One was, first of all, thank you so much for remembering Jewish holidays. I appreciate that. And I think it's part of our culture in this town, and I thank you on that. Second thing, I remember a long time ago, well, not so long ago, maybe three, four years, there was going to be, you were going to name the dog park for Michael McDublin.
Yes.
I don't know if that's moving forward or not, but I thought, wouldn't it be great if you would remember him with a bench down at Ingleside near his home? I don't know if that's an option or not, or if I'll be doubling naming or the-
No, that could absolutely be.
I think that would be a nice remembrance for him. You worked hard, he died in your service, and a lot of people miss him in the community. That's one thing. I have to take notes. And I just lost them. The second thing, I had a nice conversation with Councilman Luteri about my concerns about the fire station. And he had answered some of them regarding two exits, possibly a second exit for the, when the police project goes forward, there might be some room for an exit for the fire trucks to enter onto Pauline Streets. So he, and we talked about those things. And I'm sure there'll be more discussion as things move forward with the vote. And I appreciate that. And I also mentioned to him that shiny new buildings are wonderful in this town. We have new schools, we have a new DPW, new-ish DPW center. But it doesn't mean that we're going to keep our workers. And I'm kind of concerned about that because you are down a lot of workers. And we are getting into the winter months. And there is a big project on Pleasant Street and Gerlestone on the Oceanside that I hope we get appropriation for to finish the flooding issues that are happening on the water side. And maybe the contracts that you get with your new employees coming forward would have a stipulation regarding time. If they are trained by our town and there will be an incentive to keep them here for maybe two, three years in a contract situation, an incentive would be great because if you train them and they leave, you're just chasing your tail here. So I'm a little concerned about that. And I think that's it. But thank you so much.
And just a couple of clarifications. Well, hopefully I answered all your questions. You might not have liked all the answers, but I did. And on the exit there, just for clarification, there is no second regress for the fire trucks right now. And, you know, that's something that's worked on potentially down the road. But as of now, there is no, there's just one way in, one way out.
I think we had talked about the traffic study done for if all of the fire trucks were at that one location, if they could make it to points in our town.
Right, where they said they absolutely can.
And I always think, well, what if they're working over Bea Street? Or what if they're working over here? Because pipes break along our roads. So I'm kind of concerned about that. Remembering that in 1990, my mother's house blew up in a gas explosion down on Grand U.S.
Oh, my gosh, down by the Point.
The Point, yeah, on Grand U.S. And I do have an employee, Lauren, who, her house burned down on Morton Street, or wherever she lives, on Bullshires Street, down there by the marsh. So I am kind of concerned about fire safety as well.
All right, thank you so much, Massey. Vesillo?
Vesillo Malias, precinct five. I do have a few things I do want to mention. First is, have there been any reports of technical difficulties regarding Zoom here in the Harvey Room during town council meetings?
I mean, I think we've definitely had technical difficulties over the last couple of years.
To have live recordings, has it been kind of a-
No, I mean, it's, you know, we spent a lot of money to have this room accessible for Zoom meetings, yes.
Perfect. So it's accessible for not just the town council, but we should be using it-
Anyone who holds a meeting in here is considered accessible. Now they have to understand how to use the-
So this is, this is the suggestion I'm going to bring up. Because there are so many different appointments and there is some turnover on boards, I think the town, the town manager's office should be hosting quarterly a technology lesson for board members, chairmen, chairwomen to come and use the technology. There's meetings that we can't all attend, but it does give us a second option to also view it through Zoom. We went two years of using it constantly. And then all of a sudden, we just say, we're done using it. Like, it doesn't make sense to me. We have the accessibility. We had put thousands of dollars, like you had said, into this facility. And we're not utilizing it to the full capability. And I believe that residents should have access to every possible meeting and not just through minutes. I think we should be able to see the recordings on WCAT constantly. That way, we have a feel of what's going on in the room and not through a piece of paper. The second thing is regarding the middle school site. I had read the paper. I was not at the last meeting. And it was very frustrating for me to read because we have been sitting on that property for over, I don't actually know how many years, but it seems like nine plus years. We, we put a plan in place, well, excuse me, a plan was presented a month ago or two months ago, a plan that would generate revenue. It would not cost us any money besides the demolition, which I feel like you'd be able to find funding for. And now we have councils saying we need to look for additional ideas. And this is what the paper said. I was not at the meeting, so I'm just going off of what the transcript said. But it's just frustrating here because there have been studies. We have put ideas on the table. You presented seven different ideas that you had looked at, YMCA's, pools, auditoriums, et cetera. And now we're going to go, we're going to backpedal and we're going to prolong this project? I mean, how many more years are we going to sit on this? How many more years are we going to put brand new buildings in? And then we can't employ them because people leave? I mean, we need to start generating revenue for the town. You have a perfectly good piece of property over there. And now I know Mr. Dow is going to bring up the zoning and stuff, but we have a project that could be going forward and putting some money in our pocket so that therefore we're not asking the community for additional fees, for excessive spending and stuff like that. And then the last thing I want to bring up, political canvassing. Who oversees when candidates from town canvass throughout the community?
Who oversees when candidate-
Yeah, if they're not following the guidance of placing flyers on properties or signage and things like that.
Well, I think in terms of placing, you know, everybody knows you can't put something in a mailbox and such stuff like that. But that's done, I don't think, honestly, there's no police following people around. It's more word of mouth or somebody saying, I've had this issue. As far as signs, I know we've gotten into the sign issue two years ago.
Are candidates made aware of the laws regarding that?
Yes. When they pull papers, they have a list.
Thank you.
And thank you for your comments. And again, we do, the council does use Zoom at every meeting and has. And any meeting has the ability also to call CAT. It might not be live, but we have cameras that all they have to do is press a button to get a recording. We spent over $50,000. Now, granted, that was a lot of COVID money and stuff, but it costs $50,000 to make this room accessible and it should be used.
Thank you.
But it does take an educational process. Yeah, Mr. Dow.
Jack Dow, precinct one. Two observances today. I'm coming home from work and I'm taking a left on Seaview to go down to the space where I park my truck. A pickup truck went by me at 50 miles an hour on the wrong side of the lines. The pickup truck had a jet ski trailer on the back of it. Something has to be done about the speeding. And I saw a lot of citations for speeding there. But this is at 4:30 in the afternoon. I hope something can be done about that situation as far as speed is concerned. The other observance, and now I'm going to take care of that problem. And I'm heading to Revere. As I was leaving, the town to go to the Revere today at the curb, the curb on the opposite side of the street, not the seawalk curb, there was a man my size on a little skateboard with the handles. And you see a lot of that these days, everywhere.
Scooter.
What do they call it?
Like a scooter?
A scooter, whatever. It's a motor.
Yes.
So now, as I get a little closer, I see a scooter on that side of the road. And all bad things can happen there. But besides that, the person had a child, six or seven year old child on the front of the scooter, in front of him, falling onto the handlebars. She was wearing flip flops, shorts, no elbow, no gloves, no helmet, nothing. I'm wondering, no protective equipment, no helmet. Is this child endangerment? I hope someone can look into that. Or is it potentially child abuse? And I've seen it more than once, but now, you know, coming around the beachfront, whoa, my friend could, you know, run over. I hope Mr. De La Henti can put a stop to all this type of behavior, this reckless, child endangering behavior. And stop that person, or policeman, stop that person from what he's doing. That child is going to get basically mauled if she falls off that, onto the tire and stuff like that. So those are the two observances I had today. Getting back to town situations, the firehouse can be built at the site where it is now with a little purchase of property on both sides. The police building can add a second floor, and you did mention this in your talk, at a fraction of the price of going for a ground up police station. It's high and dry. No tides are going to come in over here, 30 feet above. And I've been talking about this idea with Frank Constantino and others for close to seven years. It's a good spot for a municipal building, both sides. The police and the fire are good spots for municipal buildings, both high and dry. This was three minutes off. I woke up about a half a minute or so, I timed it. The property at 141 Pauline Street, the side of the classroom building, is owned by the town of Winter. It is approximately 1.19 acres. It would cost about $5,000 for a survey of this lot. I've talked to surveyors. In my opinion, you sell the property as it is to a developer, the developer will be responsible for the cost of the demolition, no cost to the town. I don't know how much that building, it might be a million. So the townhouses are going for a million. And if you visit now, one side of the townhouse could be the cost of that demo. I'm sure a developer is going to be very interested in that proposal. Now, if you exclude the property at 141 Pauline Street, the 1.19 acres I just talked about, the rest of the area is Ingleside Park. Well documented, from 1902 to this day, well documented by the town, by newsprint, by pictures, everything. It's a park. There are grave circumstances to stay. If there were any changes in the use of Ingleside Park, you won't be able to get grants if you go against the state. There's a procedure, you know the procedure.
Yes.
It's October 97, this is personal.
Yes.
Go through that, we have no problems.
That's right.
Last week, I did talk to a superintendent at the, at the Beachmont Building, Beachmont Station Building, or the Suffolk Downs Project. A friend introduced me. Although this is at the beginning stage, there are plans to build a swimming pool, a field house, and an ice skating rink. I hope you would consider these alternatives to save the town a lot of money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think you used a slow watch when you timed yourself on that.
Oh, it's my phone.
We appreciate it. Believe you, Jack. Any other public comment? Mr. Schmidt?
Phil Schmidt, precinct five. I'll try to make up for Jack's time. I won't take that long. Earlier today, I sent you an email about the need for senior housing in the town. But I also wanted to talk about the process. Five weeks from today, you're going to have a new election. You're going to have a minimum of three, possibly four new councilors. I think you should get the input of those people, whether it's right after the election and invite them into the process of considering what to do with the middle school or wait until January when they take off. Because I think you have at least three, possibly four lame duck people here who are making a decision if you make it before the end of the year.
I don't like to refer to them as lame duck councilors. There are still full councilors here. I appreciate all their inputs. Anyone on Zoom?
Hello, it's Carol Meech, precinct two.
Carol, yes.
So I have a question or a comment about a potential rec center for the middle school in the area. So should I wait until after that presentation too?
No, there's not going to be a presentation. So you could make your comment now.
So one of the things that I put in the chat room to look at later is I propose in addition or in place of some of the rink space, a recreational pool. And there's one at Austin University. And if you look at the link I sent, it is accessible for everybody. It's accessible for children who can learn how to swim. It's got a ramp for people in wheelchairs to get in. There's also a couple of lanes for people to do laps. And then there's a lazy river that people can run against for emergencies. So I just wanted to share that, put that in there. And then I seconded, Vesillo, we need to have accessibility for Zoom meetings and all meetings that happen in the Harvey Room. And that's all my comments for tonight.
Thank you, Cal. And just for clarification on the pool idea, if, if the plan I had proposed goes forward, the pool, a potential pool would be the developers, it could be a request from the town or a demand actually from the town, but it would be the developer. It wouldn't be, you know, it's not thought of to be built, it's thought of by the developer to be built that they could make money running swim meets, not, you know, for recreational use as much. The town would have use of a pool if that's what it happened to be. But it wouldn't be the town's pool, just for clarification on that. Regardless of what went into that facility, if it's a field house, if it's a rink, if it's a pool, whatever it happens to be. But thank you. Any other comments?
No.
All right. Correspondents, Denise?
Yes, we had one letter from Scott Mahoney Wright and his consideration of different areas for the fire station. I will put that in the record, so it will be in lieu of reading the whole thing. It will be in the record with the minute meetings online. Thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondents, so I think the same author sent a second email-
Oh, you did?
Which he was talking about the middle school site and suggesting of exploration of a complex for kids that wanted to go into the trades. I don't know if you saw that. I'm not commenting, I'm just want to make sure that gets acknowledged.
You sent the second one? I apologize. I have the first one, I apologize. I will also print that up and put that into the record.
Yeah.
All right, I'm sorry.
And then I sent an email to Tony, so you may or may not have seen it. But I just want to make sure it gets out. It pivots off of Vesillo's comments about the standards that we have with respect to how we conduct campaigns. We, this has sort of been in dispute for a while. The question is the ability of cities and towns to regulate the size of political advertisements and private property.
Let me just excuse you for a minute because you're out of order here. We're not, this isn't correspondence between councilors and town manager. When the town manager's back-
You want me to do a town manager?
Yes.
I can do that at that point, that'd be fine.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, okay, so committee reports, we've had no committee reports. Can I just have an update on rules and ordinance? How we're doing with the Airbnb ordinance?
Yeah, Karen, here.
Yep.
Yeah, so we communicated with the town manager and the town attorney, not the local media, but I think they're both at a municipal conference as we speak. And they were going to bring some information back. And we were going to await a draft from the administration for us to take up in committee. But in the meantime, we think it's a good idea to maybe start having some public hearings, probably at a poll council meeting, just so that they get more attention than maybe a subcommittee meeting would. But that's, that's a quick summary of sort of where we're at there. I think Tony is also on the call. I just want to make sure that we're, we're allowing the thoughts of anyone in the committee here allowing it as well. If there's something that's going to be a jump in.
All right, I just want to make sure that the public understands it's not off the radar. We haven't had a committee meeting in a while, so we just want to make sure that everything's still going well. So hopefully, they could get you some information before the next meeting and you'll have the opportunity to either have a quick subcommittee meeting or we can address a public hearing on the issue in the near future. Thank you, Vice President Ruggiero. No other committee reports? There's no school department report, town manager report? Chief Wiley?
I'm just basically keeping the seat warm for the town manager while he's away at the conference. The only thing I would report is that the town manager has been working behind the scenes diligently with the Wardsworth Building tenants on possible relocation if this were to pass in November for the Firehouse Building. And I would anticipate an announcement at next week's Firehouse Building Committee meeting, which is scheduled for next Tuesday, October 10th at 6:00 PM here in the Harvey Room. And it is a public hearing format meeting.
All right. Thank you. Is Tony on the call?
Yes.
I am.
Just if you can answer a question from Council Aiello.
Would you like to give me my report first, or should I?
Oh, sure. I thought you were just kind of hanging. But yes, you can absolutely have your report now.
I may be at a conference, I'm still working. So I just want to give an update. Thanks to Council Aiello and others, you know, legislature, Senator Edwards and Representative Turco and many others on the political front. The ferry has been extended. The ferry will now, the winter ferry will run through the end of November. The ferry has been extended. The ferry will now, the Winter Ferry will run through the end of November, 11:30 will be the last day of the ferry, which is great news, given, you know, what's going on with Salem and things like that. Though the only ferry that will close a little earlier is the Lynn Ferry, given the open waters and the weather concerns, that'll end on Halloween, 10/31. But, you know, we had reached out and asked for it. We don't know how much day it was a little early, and thanks to a lot of efforts, you know, by Councila Ilo and many others, that happened, so thank you for that. Good news is, they had an announcement actually at the day of last meeting, we had the MVP grant is been awarded to Winter for a total of $291,076. There is another match on the Belle Isle Marsh fund there, so the total grant that we'll get will be $368,000, $378,000, which will allow us to look at doing some natural, you know, natural living levees along the marsh area there. Nature-based solutions flooding at Morgan Street, low-lying flood that way identified as a priority site through the previous phase of collaborative work. East Boston and Revere around Belle Isle Marsh and prevent coastal flooding. Additionally, this grant will allow us to advance community engagement with the Morgan Street neighborhood and expand community engagement efforts through previously established regional collaboration around Belle Isle Marsh. So it's more designed, but you know, as we're getting closer to construction, you know, we can ask for in the future. This is great news, and we're happy to get that funding. Also, we submitted the Complete Streets grant application, which was due last week. Thank you to Rachel Kelly for that. We asked for three things, also work with Director Cala. First is a combo with curbs at Walden Street and basketball courts for safe and crosswalks. We asked for additional ADA and curb ramps, and also 16 total, like eight crosswalks total of pedestrian crossing in ADA ramps along River Road. So, and lastly, with Vice President Ruggiero touched on it, but I will comment that we also, I've been discussing with a lot of vendors down here with regard to finding out, you know, Councila Ilo and others have asked for, you know, how many Airbnbs are out there, finding a company that does that search. I actually was able to speak with the CEO of the company of Decorate Technologies down here today, and he was able to pull up Winter, they do nightly searches as far as number of rentals out there, whether it's Airbnb, VRBO, Speed Air, et cetera. And he's kind of worked up some pricing for me for what that report will cost, but, you know, 30,000 foot view, we were able to find a total of 126 units. Kind of currently actively out there. So not all of, right now, I think we need four currently for rent, you know, but a total of that could be 126. So we certainly have some work to do there, and it was not as many as we thought, but we at least talked with some of the councilors on it, but certainly more than, you know, we have license in mind. And so I'll follow on that, I'll bring it back to the committee from the conference. And sign up the, you know, Councila Ilo had sent out an ACL memo, I could talk to Attorney Sippelletter about it today, you know, looking at what happened back in 2021 for us here. Essentially with the ACL memo, and you know, feel free to jump in here, but essentially says we can, you know, obviously you can't restrict content. And with regard to size, we can't restrict it any more than what the commercial businesses are restricted. So that puts it at, you know, five by three or 15 square feet, so that's sort of the max that we're at. Looking around town, other than a couple of banners when you first come in, I think most of them are compliant, but I certainly will want to discuss it in more detail. But we did look into it, and I'll certainly get into it all with the building commissioner when I get back, and certainly be able to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Councila Ilo?
So Tony, thanks. First of all, on the transportation front, with respect to both the ferry and the Complete Streets grants and all of the effort you're making to help with speeding and respecting crosswalks and all that stuff, it's great. And the ferry in particular, your ability to work with the folks in East Boston, not then Quincy and Lynn, made a stronger delegation that got that extension. So I think we're all in deep appreciation for what you did there, so thank you. Yeah, on the signs thing, there clearly are some signs that are beyond what is called for in the town, and I'm imploring you to get that to happen. I mean, we see what happens in, I mean, I grew up in East Boston. I moved to Winter for a purpose, part of which was to get rid of the nuttiness that happens around elections. I mean, it's a zoo in some of these communities, and I don't think that's anything we want to have happen, so I think adherence to that is pretty good. One thing I might want to remind you, for the next meeting, we were gonna have in October, a presentation of the capital liabilities that we have in the town. You know, the survey of all of the assets, roads, bridges, water sewer, buildings, et cetera. And I think Jim and I talked about having that at the forum in two weeks. That would be helpful, because I just think it's important for the citizens of the town to understand that we've got a big, big road ahead of us. Steve doesn't have anywhere near the resources, financial or staff, to attack this stuff. And we really need to talk about strategies to gain access to other people's money, to other people's dollars. So that's an important report that I then hope we can follow up with on an initiative of prioritizing what our investments need to be and finding money outside of this community, so we're not hitting the pocketbook of our fellow taxpayers. So other than that, thank you.
Anybody else? Councila Munson?
Thank you, Council President. Tony, great work. It's great news. I'm psyched about all the stuff that's going on. I love the ferry extended, I love the MVP grant. I'm excited about the Complete Streets app, hopefully that turns into money. I did want to ask about, I know we had a vigorous conversation about Airbnbs, and we're just trying to make sure that we stay on top of it. It's a little bit of the Wild, Wild West right now, and with that report of 126 units, that blows away what we had actually conservatively guessed at 100 units. So I know we had talked about enforcement. Where are you at with that right now, and how many have we managed to kind of resolve?
I'd have to check with the ISBA. I know we sent out, I told before, John, we sent out a bunch of reports, letters for address, you know, certainly not to the level of 126. I want to say it was a smaller number posted at 50, but we're gonna, once I get the pricing, be able to get this report, I'll be able to get all the addresses. And the nice thing about this company, it also gives us, you know, potential lost revenue, give us the total, you know, revenue of what they anticipate. Because not only do they track where the rentals are, they track what they're getting per night. So we'll be able to know, you know, how much in a year that they, you know, potentially losing is, are small, you know, three, four, five, six percent of, you know, say $550,000 number or something like that. They'll be able to give us that data as well. So more to follow on that, but we did send out the initial letters, and we did get some people to come in, but we certainly have more work to do.
As far as the process of having public hearings, would it be something, would it be appropriate for me to suggest or make a motion for a public hearing on the matter?
I think the Vice President already did that, and we will be held in a public hearing on Airbnb.
Can I make one more comment?
Yes.
Just relative to that, I want to commend Councila Munson taking the lead on the Airbnb issue. I think, Tony, if I'm right, correct me, we have 127 that are operating, but I think we have eight officially approved in this town?
Nine.
Everybody else is?
Twelve.
Twelve, so everybody else is illegally operating in this community. So, and it is, lost revenue is one thing, but there's also public safety issues here, and I think we are going to be cognizant of that, okay? When you are unregulated, you don't know who is living in that house next year. You don't know what kind of background check has happened there. You don't know what might possibly happen, God forbid. And we've really got to think about it from a public safety and a nuisance perspective here. We move into a community like this because we want to know who the neighbor is next to us. We hope to have a long life together with our friends. Airbnbs work counter to that. You start getting to 120 units in this town, and then all of a sudden you get to 200 units in this town. This town changes dramatically. Prices go up, our kids can't afford to stay here, it really distorts the housing market, and we've got to be really, really careful about how we proceed. Let's not make it just about money. We've got to make sure it's about public safety, because public safety is a big risk. You're starting to see a backlash against the Airbnb industry across the United States and a whole bunch of places. Where there have been incidents, and let's not get cut short here. So thank you.
Councila DiMarco?
I've stayed in a lot of Airbnbs across the country. Me and my wife like to do it. Sometimes it's a full unit, which would take the place of like a hotel, but sometimes it's just a bedroom, you know what I mean? If I'm paying taxes on my houses, and I want to rent out a bedroom, why should the town have anything to do with that?
But we're not getting into a back and forth here.
No, 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 I know, I know. I'm just, I'm just saying that. I just wanted to throw that out there. That's all I have.
And I'll say, you know, I think 126 is high. I don't think it's that far off. I think we've always said there's, you know, 90% of the people are not registered. I, you know, what I'm trying to take out of it is the fact that, and this is why I think we need to get on some type of ordinance, because it's not all about revenue, but we are obviously losing revenue from not having them enforced and having a thing. And the other thing is, there's 128 that basically go unknown. So, you know, there is going to be that bad apple. You don't even know who your neighbors are potentially now, like in the old, you know, people don't know their neighbors now. But the fact is that, you know, we have 120 something operating on a relatively quiet level. So it could be done, it's just, again, we need the enforcement, we need to go into a lot of regulations and such, but that's why we need to get an ordinance done. Thank you, Tony, for that, and hope to see you soon. CDICR, there was no meeting. Old business, the RFI is remaining on the agenda. It will be brought up at the next meeting. New business, we have one appointment, I think. I do? I did, it's right here. From President Letery, the Town Council approved the appointment of Hannah Belcher to the Firehouse Building Committee. Hannah has been at every building committee meeting, I believe, and she's actually taken minutes at every building committee, so why not be on the building committee? So Hannah has gone above and beyond on many items. She is always in attendance, subcommittee meetings and here, so I think this is a no-brain appointment. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilor Fisella, seconded by Councilor Flahkot. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing that, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If no, the ayes have it. Thank you. Let's go back for a second round of public comment.
Actually do, and it's not about the school site.
Okay. So you get four minutes.
I wanted to, I wanted to talk, I want to raise a thing, I wanted to first thank the DPW, the Town Council, and the Town Manager for the safety improvements on Pleasant Street, Route 145. The arrows, the signage, all of that, to me, that's a huge deal for the town, because of the way people drive and how heavy our vehicular traffic is in town. From my understanding, the grant the town received is pretty much slated, the money is slated for improvements on Route 145. So basically, in on Revere Street, on the short beach side, Veterans Road, Pleasant Street to Washington, so that would be the 145 loop. My concern with that is that when you hit Delby's Corner, Shirley Street is the only access point for the MWRA facility at Deer Island. So the trucks coming to Winter, they use Route 145, right? So when they come off of Veterans Road and make the right onto Shirley, that's it for basically anything to do with safety or signage, as of right now. So we have two curves. You have the curve by the yacht club, which can be dangerous at times. The worst car Councilor Bouchel knows is the one by Euro Beach. I've actually witnessed trucks, not just the MWRA trucks, but the MBTA buses have to sometimes cross over the line on the oncoming traffic to make that curve when they get close to Euro Beach. So those two curves, if we had the same signage that's at Pleasant Street, right at that curve, one flashing in both directions, if that's doable. So if you're coming from Deer Island, and you're heading towards the landing, and you're coming up on that curve, you see that flash of the sign, like, hey, slow down. Same thing going out towards Euro, it's the same thing. The other thing is, we've been trying for about two years to get a flashing pedestrian crosswalk sign on Shirley Street by Euro. Trying to cross that street, just like with Revere Street and probably most streets in this town, it's incredibly dangerous. I saw a woman cross over yesterday from the Euro Beach side to the sidewalk side of Shirley Street. Guy came flying around the corner, hit his brakes. If he hadn't hit his brakes, he would have run her over, and her child. So it's a matter of public safety more than anything. I'm not sure who to throw this at, so I'm throwing it at you, because to date, I've reached out to Mike Gilseo, Steve Cala, the Transportation Safety Advisory Committee, the Fire Department, Chief De La Hunte, and it's kind of been ping ponged around. So at this point, if all we can do by the end of this year is put up the flashing arrows, one in each direction by each curve, it might get people to slow down. And with all the infrastructure, like the roadways being repaved and resurfaced, we were out without a yellow line. So people were literally driving down the middle of Shirley Street, because there was no separation between oncoming and the other direction. So truly, again, it's a matter of public safety. I'm thinking, you know, if the crosswalk, the pedestrian thing could be thrown on somebody's agenda, if it can happen at the beginning of next year, great, that would be wonderful. But at this point, if we can do something with a flashing arrow, at least, not even by the yacht club, just on that curve by Euro Beach, it might get people to slow down and hopefully avoid some kind of oncoming collision.
Thank you. And I will, and Tony's still on the call, I'll direct or ask Tony to look into this and see what the opportunities are for us to do that. As far as the flashing pedestrian, is there a crosswalk where you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So Tony, if you're still on, or if not, Chief Wiley will make sure that you're aware of that, because good suggestions, thank you.
Mr. President, maybe just a suggestion, interim suggestion. I think we're, Director Cala just left, but I think we're due within the next 45 days to receive last year's grant of the eight signs. They can be put on all 145. With, given that 145 itself is going to be under construction and under the control of a contractor, I wonder whether it's possible to petition the DOT to take two of those signs and put them up on the curve there, while we have construction everywhere else, so it's just something for the total to look into.
Definitely look into that, why not? Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Tony, sorry, didn't think you were on.
Yes, Mr. Dow.
Thank you. Jackdaw Precinct 1, gentleman just mentioned Euro Beach. I've lived there for five years. So when you get out of your car and take a bag of groceries, and you see a car coming from the yacht club, you have about 11 seconds to reach the sidewalk. I timed it 100 times. Sometimes when they come from Deer Island, and you get out of your car, they go across the yellow lines to feed you to the sidewalk over there. So well suggested, I appreciate you bringing it up. Traffic down there, they can go 50 miles an hour. I've seen it 100 times. So thank you very much. The other thing is, maybe I missed something, but maybe I didn't. Are all the water surfaces on Revere Street from the end of town up to Crested, are they all complete with no lead services going into any houses? And new, you know, carpet going to every house on that street, so, you know, if somebody needs a new water system aligned, you know, next year. I know we have plenty of time, it's only a binder, but make sure that all the water lines going to the individual premises are complete. Thank you.
Yes, when we're doing, we have a list of, to make sure the rest of the lead lines will be done, and we do X amount every year. But if there's an infrastructure project going on, unanticipated, we always make sure, and we did that up on Pleasant Street not too long ago. We were able to get.
That's been discussed.
Yes, of course, yes, thank you. All right. All right. Yes, Mr. Sacco?
Taut Sacko Precinct 2, just a couple of observations slash comments in regards to one, the scooters. As candidate for council at large, I'm standing on the corner of Main and Pleasant every morning. And every morning, without fail, I see at least three or five, three to five bikers or scooterists blowing through that red light, going on in East Boston, someone is going to get killed. We need to stop encouraging this madness with bikes and scooters on roads. Someone's going to get decked. With regard to, oh boy, I lost my train of thought, because I was so excited about the bicyclists. Regardless, that was, oh no, and with regard to the Airbnb situation, quite frankly, I think Mr. Ilo has a point. We all want to live here with our families and watch them grow. We all want to live here with our families and watch them grow old. I've been, my whole position has been affordability. But nine people shouldn't get to decide how people deal with their property. It should be a ballot question, like most of these other things that deal with the budget and money, like trash fees and all that other stuff should be a ballot question. We shouldn't be deciding this, nine people should not be deciding this issue.
Any other questions, anyone on Zoom?
Yes, Shannon Pelosi.
Shannon.
Shannon Pelosi, Precinct Three, just two quick things. One, I just wanted to reiterate, Facilie's comment earlier about accessibility to all meeting. I think there has to be standard policies around that and not, you know, too individual chair persons to make decisions around that, particularly when they're in conference rooms that are, you know, accessible. We spend a lot of money on that. If we really want to be, you know, serious about equity and inclusion, I think we have to think about. So I've sent multiple correspondences on there, but I, I just want to reiterate that point. I think the second thing is, it just maybe, as it relates to the school department report, I understand, obviously there's school committee meetings and people have, you know, the ability to attend those, but I think that just given that 50% of our budget roughly, you know, the give or take is our school, I think it's important that if we, you know, could maybe beef up, and Jim, you're pretty thorough, so I don't take that as a criticism, but in terms of some of the happenings that are happening in our school, I have a good grader whose teacher gave her notice on Friday, who was the last day, gave her notice that day, and we are now without a teacher. And so I think updates on personnel and where we have vacancies throughout the school system is, is really, really important. I know we talk about retirements as part of the regular school committee agenda, but I think that it would be prudent that we let our council people know where 50% of their money is going and rail tangible updates on what's going on there. And then in addition to that, you know, enrollment, because I think enrollment also fluctuates and changes throughout the year. And I know Superintendent Howard, we are always in contact and she's very, very transparent and responsive to me, but I think that, you know, just if we could be a little bit more forthcoming with the public around what's happening in our schools around those areas, I think that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. And I think it is, just as businesses, different towns and everybody else, staffing is absolutely an issue and it continues to be an issue for us. And enrollment continues to be an issue as well. We are just shy of 2,000 students in our schools, which is as high as it's been in the last 15 or so years. And I think the superintendent is on top of that and is very cognizant of it, always checking on residency and such. And we've had a abundance, I'm not saying abundance, I should, upwards of two dozen new children coming into the community. Hasn't had as much of an effect because the superintendent has been so diligent on residency requirements that we've offset it a little bit, but, you know, the staffing issue is definitely something that I will be bringing up then. And thank you for those comments. Public relations, we have, Winthrop, our next public, our next council meeting is October 17th, which is the third Tuesday in October. It is also scheduled by the charter as one of our public hearings, public forums. The charter states that we are to have a public forum in the spring and the fall. The one in the spring is constituted around finance and the one in the fall is constituted around delivery of service. So that will be held October 17th at 7:00 PM. We will have a council meeting that begins at 6:00 PM. October 27th is the trunk or treat at the Goman Fort Banks, put on by the Goman Fort Banks PTO. It is held behind the ArtiT Cummings School and that is at 4:30. And this Saturday, October 7th, Parks and Rec's Fall Fair and Craft Show at Ingleside Park from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. There is still vendor, vendor space available. If anyone wants to, reach out to Parks and Rec and Sean Driscoll specifically. And it is always a fantastic event. Hopefully the weather holds out and it will be a great time for all. Councila Honan, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Councila Fucila.
No.
Councila Munson.
Yes, I do. I'm just going to remind people about the Country Night to Benefit BigEd.org. It's to help cancer patients and their families. It's this Saturday at the Cottage Park Yacht Club. There'll be line dancing, great food from Blackstrap. There'll be some great items to bid on, like a framed arusione jersey signed. And, and it's for my best friend. So please join if you like to do any of the above.
Counsela Belcher.
None, thank you.
Counsela DiMarco.
Yeah, I wanted to, so when I was in kindergarten, my teacher was Miss Wesseling. I don't know if anybody remembers Miss Wesseling, you know? One of the first things I remember learning in school is that in 1492, Columbus sailed the ocean blue. That was one of the first things I learned. Columbus Day is coming up this Monday. It's kind of gotten a bad racket recently, but it is, I, I do think indigenous people should have their holiday. It shouldn't be the same day as the Italians. The Italians have celebrated this. I don't know, like, when I was a kid, you know, somehow 500 years later, Columbus became evil, like, for some reason. Meanwhile, George Washington and Thomas Jefferson, they owned slaves as well. So, I mean, you got to judge people by the time they lived in and not go back and look at things. But the Italians are going to have their day this Monday. So eat your tripe, eat your pasta, all right? And everybody have a happy Columbus Day.
Councila Yello.
Happy Columbus Day back to you as well.
Thank you.
So thank you for saying that. Two quick things. One is we should remind people, the last day to register to vote is coming up soon.
October 26th.
October 26th, so we should make sure that that's on the website and highly publicized, make sure people vote. Some of you may have seen this on Channel Five Chronicle, but this year's annual Belle Isle Fall Festival is on October 14th at Belle Isle Marsh. It's the 40th anniversary of the founding of the Friends of the Belle Isle Marsh. For those of you who don't know the history, because some of you young tykes here particularly own the thing. What is now beautiful Belle Isle Marsh and the largest salt marsh in the city of Boston and one of the largest in the region, was slated to be an oil terminal to provide petroleum for Logan Airport. It was going to be dug up, deep ports and all that. It was going to look like New Jersey, no offense, if you're from New Jersey. And a citizen band of people from Winthrop, River, East Boston successfully fought over a long period of time, starting 40 years ago to the beautiful parks today. There's a rumor, caviar is, that there's going to be candy and cake to celebrate the 40th anniversary. So welcome all on October 14th.
Excellent. Counsela Flockhart.
Nothing.
And just a couple of things here. WCAT, and not necessarily due to WCAT at all, but there's been channel changes throughout Comcast. So just to let everyone understand, the old Channel 3 is now Channel 9. The old Channel 15 is now Channel 8. And Channel 22 is going to stay Channel 22. So why, I don't know, but it's not WCAT doing this. I will also say that our fire department, I got a resident, came into my business a couple of days ago and was talking about having a small event in her backyard. And they heard this noise, 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 and it was a Sunday, it was Sunday, and they knew it was a raccoon and it was lodged in between their shed and they couldn't get it out. They tried calling a few different places to no avail. Fire, fire engine happened to be coming by because there was a vehicle that was having trouble in front of their house. Once they helped that vehicle, the resident asked them if they could be helped. They went in the backyard, they took the fence apart, they moved, they got the raccoon out. And it's just, you know, little stuff like that, that, thank you, Chief Wiley. I don't know who the two officers were, but thank them for us.
Did you guys name the raccoon?
They went above and beyond for that.
Rocky, rocky there.
And I will say also, and I'll ask the, the town clerk to help us out on this. Councila Yello mentioned, well, mentioned registration, but voting is November 7th. Just for clarification, there is not early voting in a town election, just my understanding.
Right, in a local election, it does not.
There is absentee voting.
Yes.
So we encourage people to contact town clerk for absentee, but there is not early voting, just in case people assume that.
Right, no.
Something I assumed, so.
Sorry, apologize.
Other than that, we will take.
October 21st, Fire Station.
October 21st, they will have a, another opportunity for people to go to the fire stations as an open house. You could go to the Shirley Street Station or the Pauline Street Station. We encourage people to do that. We still encourage people to go to winthropfirestation.com and you could take the video tour yourself right there if you, if you wish. And also find out much more information and see different clips from different meetings.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion? Oh, Counsela, Vice President Magero.
I just want to bring up, I'm working with Nancy Shane, they want to bring the trinket reading back to the downtown French Square on Halloween, Day of the 31st. So more on that, but just wanted to give a heads up that that is, they are working hard to bring that back, working with the business owners to offer that up again to Halloween.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there's a motion by Counsela DiMarco to adjourn, there's a second by Counsela Yello. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, meeting adjourned.